Now on to next one. We will be taking photographs and possibly video during this event. By being here, you agree to be included in our media. Our restrooms are located at the back of the building. You can reach them through the conference room. The kitchen is also in that direction and you can fill a water bottle with the tap next to the sink. We also have still and sparkling water and refreshments in the next room. Please do feel free to step out as needed. As you may know, the Community Environmental Council has created environmental solutions in our region since 1970. Our current focus is rapid and equitable solutions to the climate crisis. Here is an outline of tonight's agenda. I'm very pleased to introduce your host, Dan Galpern, General Counsel and Executive Director of the CPR Initiative. Dan founded CPR Initiative a little over four years ago, in part to amplify the effectiveness of the work he has long been engaged in with a renowned climate scientist, Dr. James Hansen. Since 2011, Dan has served as legal and policy advisor to Dr. Hanson, including with respect to administrative, criminal, civil, state, and federal actions in over 12 different jurisdictions. CPR Initiative's main objective is to press the federal government to take effective action under existing law in light of the longstanding and continuing political deadlock in Congress concerning the climate crisis. I'll turn it over to you now, Dan. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. On behalf of CPR Initiative, we're delighted to be here. One of the main reasons that we're here is because I know you're stalwart executive director and incredibly talented leader Sigrid Wright. Unfortunately, she cannot be here, but she conveys through me her delight that you all are here and her best hopes for a successful evening. Well, why are we here? We are here to help you build on the ground momentum to reverse the threat of the climate crisis. That, in fact, is the motto of the Community Environmental Council, and we share that specific goal. Now, in terms of the genesis of this hearing, actually, this is the third in our series of public hearings on the question, what more should the United States do on climate? And so let me give you the basic background for this. CPR Initiative was founded, as Kathy noted, for this specific purpose of figuring out what can be done under existing federal law to combat the climate crisis. And in particular, under existing federal law in light of the continuing deadlock in Congress over climate change and the appropriate response by the United States. And building on a brainchild of our board president, Don Vignani, who is here with us today, came all the way from Honolulu for this purpose. We petitioned in 2022 under a little-known statute, unless you happen to be an environmental attorney, called the Toxic Substances Control Act. Because in Section 6 of the Act, it states that where there is a chemical or mixture that presents an unreasonable risk of injury to health or the environment, well then, in that circumstance, the administrator, that is the head of the Environmental Protection Agency, shall, so must not may, shall take, take action, shall impose one or more seven specific requirements, including restrictions to the point of prohibition on any part of the life cycle of these chemicals, the production, or importation, or processing, or distribution and commerce, or use, even the disposal of these chemical substances. Well, what chemical substances present more of an unreasonable risk of injury to health or the environment than oil, gas, and coal and the products, their products when used as intended? CO2 and methane and the other of the CO2 six greenhouse gases. They present an extreme risk of injury to health and the environment, and that risk is now being realized all over the world. So we petitioned the agency under citizen supervision. The agency rejected the petition on the ground, among other things, that it was doing enough already to meet the president's goals on climate. So go away. Now, long story short, in this petition, we expressly requested that in developing the rule that we sought to undertake an orderly phase out of oil, gas, and coal within reach of US law, that the agency should go around the nation, taking the pulse, the temperature of the public to gauge its appetite for such serious climate action. And to hear from experts, to hear from highly impacted communities, to hear from activists, to hear from the public. But of course, they rejected the petition. So we decided, that is, the Board of Directors of CPR Initiative, that to the extent that we had resources and far-seeing local partners, we would undertake such public hearings, and that's what we're doing. And so if you're testifying tonight, think that you're not only providing information to us and to your neighbors and to those who will watch it as we archive it on at CPRclimate.org. But also, you're speaking, think that you're speaking, because you will be, directly to the Environmental Protection Agency. Now, I should say, we invited EPA this hearing, as we have done in the past, our prior two hearings. The first in November of 2022 in Boulder, Colorado, and the second at the end of September in Honolulu. This is our third. We're going to be doing a fourth probably in the Bay Area. And even though they're not here, we will provide them with the entire archive of this hearing as well as a summary of it. So as Kathy indicated, we have a terrific lineup. They include leading scientists in the field. They include professors from the University of California, Santa Barbara. They include policy experts, legal experts. They include activists from the local community. And so we are delighted to be presenting this and to be building this record. So let me then introduce the first person. The first person actually is from the Netherlands. He is a storied climate scientist. He, it's 4:00 AM there. So he pre-recorded his actual testimony. His name is Dr. Eelko Rolling. He is a professor, retired professor in ocean and climate change in the Research School of Earth Sciences, the Australian National University. He remains affiliated with the National Oceanography Center, University of Southampton, the United Kingdom. He's a fellow of the American Geophysical Union, among other positions and honors. And he's the author of approximately 230 peer-reviewed contributions and three public science books. The first is titled "The Oceans: A Deep History", Princeton University Press, 2017. The second, Oxford University Press in 2019, titled "The Climate Question: Natural Cycles, Human Impact, Future Outlook". And the third, and most recent, is titled "Rebalancing Our Climate: The Future Starts Today". So we will now roll the tape from Professor Rolling.
This statement draws on my extensive work on diverse aspects of climate change from a perspective of understanding natural variability, which clearly highlights the exceptional nature of current man-made climate change. I've outlined these views in three public-oriented books. The first, "The Oceans", outlines the history of Earth's climate and life through its geological time from an oceanic perspective. My second book, "The Climate Question", outlines what natural climate variations, what drives them, and how current changes are cleanly, clearly different from natural patterns. The third book, "Rebalancing Our Climate", describes the need for action and details research towards action on removing greenhouse gases from the atmosphere. For details regarding my statement, I refer to these books initially and to their cited references for further information. Climate change is now with us for the foreseeable future. There is no longer an escape, but we can still influence the severity of its impact. The, in future development, is determined not only by ongoing emissions, but also by the fact that the climate system is still catching up with the effects of our historical emissions because of slow components in the climate system. The most important slow components are surface ocean warming, deep ocean warming, and the responses of the great continental ice sheets. So why do these affect climate in the future? Well, global warming will continue to continue until the heat radiation from Earth into space balances the energy received from solar radiation. The aspect of global temperature that we need to consider here is that it's average over all of Earth's surface, which includes some 30% land surface and 70% sea surface. And the ocean's surface water needs much more energy to heat up than land surface. And that is because the ocean's surface, as you can see here, that warm sphere over 10 degrees, is part of a well-mixed layer of 500 meters thickness. And this is driven, this is mixed by winds, and it continuously overturning. And because this well-mixed layer actively circulates over multi-decadal to centennial timescales, warming of the ocean's surface takes a long time, takes about 150 to 200 years. Now, as a result, 70% of Earth's surface area is still in the process of warming in response to the historical greenhouse gas emissions, which you can see in the following graph. And you can see clearly that lag of the ocean average temperature development relative to the land average temperature development. And this means that average global temperature, the fact that ocean temperature lags, means that the average global temperature is lower than it will be once the ocean's surface temperature is fully adjusted to what we have already emitted. And because temperature is what determines the amount of heat radiation back into space, this cooling effect is too low in comparison to the incoming radiation received from the sun. That drives an energy imbalance, which is illustrated here. And that positive energy imbalance that we have left as a result means that more radiation is coming out of coming in than is going out. And as a result, when we have more coming in than is going out, we have a further warming happening. So that warming will continue even if greenhouse gas levels are kept constant at modern values until the energy balance is restored. A part of ocean warming relates to adjustment of deep-sea temperatures, and the deep sea is three kilometers thick and has slow circulation. So that deep-sea temperature adjustment is even slower and extends the process over many centuries to millennia. And on top of all this, ice sheets are strongly affected by ocean temperature, and they respond over timescales of centuries to millennia. So that's another slow component in the system. So in consequence, the notable impact that we have made on the climate already will only get worse as the slow systems slowly adjust. Even if the greenhouse gas levels were kept constant at present-day levels, considerable warming will continue. In other words, historical emissions will still drive considerable warming into the future. It's like, it will just keep on continuing, but not smoothly. Climate change doesn't change smoothly like the speed of a freight train, for example, that you start accelerating. Instead, there are steps where the process suddenly lurches forward, and there are several of these processes, and they are indicated here on the map. That's courtesy of Professor Tim Lenton. And we call these changes that suddenly create a change from one state to another tipping points. And these, all signs are that we are getting close to two or three of the major climate tipping points at which the climate suddenly will lurch forward into a worse state. One tipping point is permafrost melting. The second is collapse of parts of the Greenland and Antarctic ice sheets. The third is a major reorganization of high-latitude deep-water formation. And then there is another one related to dieback of forests globally. And overall, therefore, we stand to see much more climate change into the future, including abrupt transitions associated with the tipping points in response to our historical emissions. This remains true even if greenhouse gas emissions, of greenhouse gas levels, were to be kept constant at present-day levels. Now, as you can see here, the United States is the nation with the greatest historical emissions. It's also a major fossil fuel exporter, including being the largest natural gas exporter in the world at the moment, which drives new emissions that make matters even worse. In consequence, the United States really should shoulder a major part of the burden for addressing the damages, reducing emissions, and arguably for even going further, namely, removing historical emissions from the atmosphere. The present petition is about this need to take responsibility, and the underlying arguments are really very easy to see and to verify. We have completely run out of time for action. Further delays will only result in disasters, damages, displacements, diseases, deaths. Undoubtedly, next generations will be the ones that pay most, but nobody will be exempt. Existing generations will be affected also, and prosperity only offers limited relief in natural disasters. So everybody can be affected. We're truly facing humanity's ultimate grand challenge, and this petition is for the United States to take seriously its responsibility. And that will also demonstrate that it can still be a global key leader in tackling such global grand challenges. Thank you very much.
You can't hear me, but thank you, Eelko. I forgot to, remiss in forgetting to introduce my co-hearing officer, Stephanie Harrington. She's local. She's on the Board of Directors of CPR Initiative, and she runs a law office in Montecito, California. So if you need a good lawyer, she is there, Stephanie Harrington. To my left is Kaylee Martin, and Kaylee is our communications specialist at CPR Initiative. Those of you who frequent our website will notice a substantial amount of resources that hopefully would prove immediately useful to you. If you haven't seen it yet, please feel free to check out our materials at CPR Initiative. And that is, the website is CPRclimate.org. Okay, we're ready for our next speaker? Our next speaker will be remote, but live. And he is Dr. James E. Hanson. Dr. Hanson is the former director of the NASA Goddard Institute of Space Studies, and he's the current director of Climate Science Awareness and Solutions, which is a program of the Earth Institute at Columbia University in New York. Dr. Hanson is the author of the book "Storms of My Grandchildren" and the forthcoming "Sophie's Planet", and the principal author or co-author of numerous papers on the subject of climate change and Earth's energy imbalance. Dr. Hanson is perhaps best known for his testimony on climate change to congressional committees in the 1980s. These helped raise broad awareness of the global warming issue in the United States and beyond. Dr. Hanson's recent research establishes that fossil fuel greenhouse gas emissions have already raised Earth's temperature well beyond the Holocene range, potentially imposing an increasingly untenable burden on young people to undertake or pay for exceedingly expensive carbon dioxide extraction to limit climate change and its consequences. His research also raises the prospect that continued high fossil fuel emissions will melt the planet's major ice sheets at a nonlinear rate. On the other hand, in his work, Dr. Hanson has helped specify the magnitude and rate of decarbonization required to preserve and restore a viable climate system. So Jim, it's to you.
Hi, Dan. Can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, well, despite the problems with Professor Eelko's presentation, I think you can see why I wanted to start with him. He really gives a great summary of the whole story in just a matter of minutes. And that's going to let me focus on a specific issue, which I think is quite important, and that's the data that shows the Earth's albedo, the reflectivity of the Earth, the fraction of the incoming sunlight that is reflected by the planet, has decreased substantially. And that means the amount of energy from the sun that's absorbed is increasing. And of course, that adds to the greenhouse gas warming and has considerable implications, which I'll talk about. So let's go to my next chart. If you could advance my slide, please. So the longstanding issue about climate has been, how sensitive is the climate to a forcing like increased greenhouse gases? And for the past several decades, we've had this very precise data on the changes in atmospheric composition based on the ice core data, which contains a record of the atmospheric composition for the last 800,000 years. And we also know the temperature in Antarctica, because that's recorded in the snowflakes that piled up and formed the ice sheet. But what we need to know to estimate how sensitive the system is, is the global temperature. And that remained a mystery for the past several decades. It was estimated 40 years ago that the global ocean was only a few degrees colder during the Ice Ages than it was during the warm interglacial periods like the one we're in now. But that was based on the assumption that the microscopic biology in the ocean's surface would migrate to stay within the temperature zones that they prefer today. But it's also possible that the biology could adapt to the changing temperature. And that remained uncertain until the past two or three years, when Jessica Tierney and her colleagues removed the biology data and just used the chemical tracer data and found that, in fact, the Ice Age, instead of being three and a half degrees colder than today, was actually about seven degrees Celsius colder. And that is confirmed then by Alan Seltzer and his colleagues, who measured the temperature of groundwater that was deposited during the Ice Age. And that agreed very well with the analysis of Tierney. So we now know that the range of temperature, the response to the change in atmospheric composition is a lot greater than we had estimated previously. And we can, the best estimate of IPCC was that doubled CO2 would cause a three-degree Celsius global temperature. We now know that that is too small. We can rule that out with greater than 99% certainty. And a more realistic estimate is closer to five degrees. Now, that raised a different issue. And how is it that the climate models, many of which had sensitivities of the order of three degrees for doubled CO2, how could they agree with the observed warming in the last century? And the reason that they could is there are two large changing climate forcings. One is the greenhouse gases, but the other is aerosols, the small particles, the air pollution that has major health impacts. And it's the, that is unfortunately not measured. So there were estimates used for that, and naturally, the estimates that were used were what was needed in order to give a calculated temperature that agreed with the observed temperature change in the last century. Well, if the climate sensitivity is higher, that means you need more aerosols also, because the greenhouse gases cause warming, and that's partially offset by the cooling caused by the aerosols. So that is, that's discussed in a paper that we published several months ago, "Global Warming in the Pipeline". But could I have the next chart? So the data, this is the data for the Earth's albedo as a function of time over the last, over the period when it's been measured accurately from spacecraft. And we now have this human-made experiment where the International Maritime Organization passed new regulations on the sulfur content of ship fuels, beginning in January of 2015, and then strengthened in January of 2020. And that is at least part of the reason for why the Earth has become substantially darker. The decrease in the albedo is equivalent to an increase of CO2 of the order of 100 parts per million. So that's a huge additional forcing, additional to the actual increases in CO2. And could I have the next chart? The importance of this, this is a, Professor Rolling mentioned that the response of the climate system when you change a forcing that drives climate change is very slow. I mean, there are components that are very slow. So this chart shows that within 10 years, you get about half of the temperature response. And then in the next century, you only get about another 10%, and it takes a millennium to get you up to 90%. So the important point is that if you add a new forcing, like we get by reducing the aerosols from ships. from ships, you should get quite a large response within ten years. And so, and could I have the next chart? So that that's, you can go to the next chart, please. So this decreased aerosols and therefore decreased cooling is, which began actually, there's some places like China, which began to reduce their particulate pollution a decade or more ago. And so post two thousand and ten, we expect to see an acceleration of global warming because of these decreased aerosols. And in fact, the data are consistent with that. But we will learn a lot more within just the next year, because when you have these, there's a large amount of natural variability of the global temperature, particularly caused by the southern, the tropical climate, the El Nino-La Niña cycle. And we're currently going into a, we're in an El Nino period, which normally would increase the temperature by one to two tenths of a degree above the trend line. But we're anticipating if we get the aerosol effect that we expect, that the global temperature will actually pass the one point five degree range averaged over a year and reach at least one point six degrees. And then when we go to the next La Niña, we don't think it's going to fall back to the trend line, that green line. It will be caused of this additional climate forcing. So this is a big deal, which means that the global warming effects are going to be larger and appear sooner than has been expected up to now. And that's going to push the system toward tipping points. I understand that Tim Linton is not going to be able to speak today, and he's published quite nice work on different tipping points. But the one that I think is most important is the the threat of the West Antarctic ice sheet going unstable and raising sea level several meters. What's going on with that tipping point is the grounding line of that ice sheet is retreating inward toward the South Pole at a rate of about one kilometer a year. And it's moving, the grounding line is moving up on the shore at slightly increasing altitude, but in about twenty kilometers further, it will suddenly hit a canyon. And then the collapse of the ice sheet would occur quite rapidly. So we really have to prevent the continued movement of that grounding line toward the South Pole, or we're going to hand young people a rising sea level, a rapidly rising sea level, which will cause us to lose most coastal cities. So that's the reason that we can't allow this continued global warming, not to mention the accelerated global warming. We're going to have to actually reduce the amount of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere if we're going to not pass these tipping points. And that's the reason for Dan's initiative. There are other tipping points in the system, but I think, I think I've taken enough time. And so I'm going to stop here.
Thank you very much, Jim. Can you hear me well?
Yeah.
I actually want to just ask one question, because I think global warming in the pipeline, did that come out in November?
Yes.
So my question is, what is the impact on the unmasking effect? If any, of this major volcanic eruption in Iceland? Have you thought through if that has any, if that's reversing some of the unmasking?
No, the high latitude volcano, Iceland volcano, is a very small effect. The, you know, the aerosols tend to move forward, and it's not going to be a global effect at all. That it can have regional effects. There have been Icelandic volcanoes in the past, which were much larger in terms of the aerosols they produced and really were really dim the sun over Europe. But even that is a relatively small effect. That does not mean, however, that volcanoes cannot have a big climate effect. We, in nineteen ninety-one, we had Mount Pinatubo. Now, that was an equatorial eruption, sending aerosols into both hemispheres. And shortly after it erupted, we predicted that it would cause global cooling of three or four degrees Celsius, tenths of a degree Celsius, because it increased the reflection of sunlight by three watts per meter square, which is larger than the present Earth energy imbalance or the imbalance at that time. And therefore, the global warming stopped. In fact, we got global cooling for a couple of years after that. So volcanoes can have a big effect, but the Icelandic one is a, most of that volcano stays in the troposphere. It's not a long lasting, and it's not global.
Okay, well, thank you so much. We're so delighted that you were able to join us, Jim. Appreciate your contribution today. Our next speaker is Nelson Bonner. Now, Nelson taught technology at Hartnell College in Salinas, California, and Chartwell School in Seaside, California. After retirement, he finished his PhD in psychology from the Institute of Transpersonal Psychology in Palo Alto, California. As a grandparent, he has focused on a number of projects to address the climate crisis, culminating at least most recently with his joining the Board of Directors of CPR Initiative. So Nelson, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Dr. Hanson for opening for me. Actually, I'm the anomalous. A rare male scheduled to testify today as an expert, some discipline pertinent to the climate crisis. I am not. Yet I'm on the Board of Directors of the Climate Protection and Restoration Initiative. Let me explain. My name is Nelson Bonner, as Dan said. I'm a retired editor, technical writer, and technology educator, and a grandparent. In two thousand and sixteen, after the election and in response to it, I founded a nonprofit, Green Chicken Fund for Fossil Fuel Free Future and their enablers, with the intent of suing the fossil fuel profiteers and their enablers for damages to the health and welfare of the world's children and grandchildren, using the lost settlements to create a fund to assist young people suffering from climate-related impacts. In the course of my research, I learned of Dan Galpern and his work in conjunction with James Hanson, whose testimony you heard just a moment ago, and who in two thousand and nine published Storms of My Grandchildren, The Truth About the Coming Climate Catastrophe and Our Last Chance to Save Humanity. I contacted Dan and made arrangements to meet with him, necessitating a road trip of three thousand miles. Dan agreed to review my lawsuit plans and a few weeks later met with me again to explain generally why the approach I was undertaking was practically and effectively unworkable. So just back to the drawing board. A while later, then, inspired hugely by such developments as the student climate strikes and extinction rebellion, I began to work on a book, What More Are Grandparents For? The Climate Crisis in the Words of Grandparents and Grandchildren, Parents and Children and Non-Parents, Too. At more or less the same period of time, Dan founded the Climate Protection and Restoration Initiative, CPR Initiative for short, and was, to my astonishment, interested in having me serve on the Board of Directors, despite, as I noted previously, my distinct lack of scientific expertise. All of the above is by way of saying that, as a non-expert, these anomalous words of mine are not intended for the ears of scientists or policymakers. They are intended for those of you who are also not experts. Those of you here in this room watching over the internet or viewing the archive of this hearing at some time in the future, these words of mine are about and for you. So even though you may not be an expert, that doesn't mean you're not concerned with the climate crisis. You wouldn't be here if you weren't concerned. You may very well be involved with climate-focused organizations and activities already, or perhaps you're not, if you are, right? Either way, however, it's very likely that you are involved in some in some way with other causes that have nothing to do with the climate crisis. Political organizations, social justice organizations, arts organizations, recreational organizations, animal welfare organizations, et cetera. In this regard, I would like to ask you to consider, later at your leisure, how the future effects of the climate crisis, as they intensify increasingly, are going to affect the other causes to which you are committed. Even without the tipping points discussed here still as yet untipped, the catastrophic weather events of the last few years, fires, smoke, floods, hurricanes and typhoons, Arctic storms, melting sea ice and glaciers, increasing volcanic temperatures, coral die-offs, and of course, sea level rise are all a product of still less than one point five degrees Celsius warming. Think of how the catastrophic events we are already experiencing will be intensified when the warming reaches two degrees Celsius or beyond, and beyond. How will your causes be affected then? I'm asking you to consider this. If your commitment to your other causes is to be truly realistic in these new times, then that commitment absolutely requires an additional commitment to confront the climate crisis. And along these lines, the sooner all of the political, social justice, arts, recreational, animal welfare, and other organizations revise their mission statements to include addressing the climate crisis, the more of a chance we will have to get through this. To put all of this in perspective, I would like to observe the obvious, that the climate crisis is far from the only potentially catastrophic, challenging challenge facing humankind. The technologies of artificial intelligence, genetic biology, quantum computing, autonomous autonomous weaponry and robotics all present immense potential threats and challenges. The climate crisis has the capacity to exacerbate any and all of these other dangers exponentially.
That's time, Nelson.
Lastly, I would like to invite you, if you haven't already, to become familiar with the CPR Initiative website. It is very comprehensive and explains our past, present, and future activities in detail. Profound kudos to Kaylee Martin, our red master, whose expertise is so apparent and so appreciated. Please consider supporting CPR Initiative as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nelson. And I know you didn't get to say everything you wanted, so if you wouldn't mind submitting your full comments, and we'll include those in the record, written comments. Thank you very much. Okay, next is Sir Robert Watson, Dr. Watson, formerly Director of the Science Division. The Science Division. And Chief Science of the Office of Mission to Planet Earth, that be National Aeronautics and Space Administration. And he is the Director of Strategic Development, or he most recently was Director of Strategic Development for the Tyndall Center for Climate Change Research at the University of East Anglia. He is the lead author of a number of publications, including the February twenty twenty-one United Nations Environment Program Report and Making Peace with Nature, a scientific blueprint to tackle the climate, biodiversity, and pollution emergencies.
Okay. As you know, my name is Bob Watson. I'm the former Chair of IPCC, ITBES, and Making Peace with Nature, and I'm the current Co-Chair of the UNEP Global Environmental Outlook VII. The world faces not one, but four interconnected, human-induced environmental crises. Climate change, loss of biodiversity, and the degradation of ecosystems, pollution and land degradation. Each issue is not simply an environmental issue, but an economic, development, security, social, moral, and ethical issue. Each issue is undermining human well-being, food and water security, human health, poverty alleviation, a more equitable world. And none of the Sustainable Development Goals can be realized unless these four environmental crises are successfully addressed together. The Earth's climate, as you've already heard, has already warmed at one point two degrees Celsius globally, accompanied by increased frequency and intensity of floods, droughts, heat waves, storm surges, wildfires, and the loss of glaciers and sea ice. Twenty twenty-three was the warmest on record, with the warming being just under one point five degrees Celsius compared to pre-industrial levels. And twenty twenty-four may be even warmer if the current El Nino continues well into this year and the sulfur aerosol levels decrease. Unless the world aggressively addresses climate change, climate change will likely become the greatest threat to the loss of biodiversity, both the loss of species, genetic diversity, the degradation of ecosystems, and the loss of ecosystem services, especially regulating services, which are essential for human well-being. One million of the eight million species on Earth are at risk of extinction in the coming decades and centuries. The goal of the Paris Climate Agreement is to keep warming to well under two degrees Celsius and preferably one point five degrees Celsius. With current pledges, the world is not on a pathway to achieve the Paris Climate Target, a one point five or well under two degrees Celsius, but is heading towards a warming of two point five to three degrees Celsius. And this assumes all current government pledges are realized, which is highly unlikely, given the lack of funding and technology cooperation for developing countries. To be on a pathway to one point five degrees Celsius would require emissions in twenty thirty to be half of today's emissions. To be on a pathway to two degrees Celsius, emissions would have to be twenty-five percent less than current emissions. The current pledges suggest emissions in twenty thirty could be comparable or even higher than today. In my opinion, the one point five target is impossible to achieve, and it is highly unlikely the less than two degrees Celsius target will be met because of a lack of political will. The 1.5 target will almost certainly be passed within the decade of the 2030s and the two degrees Celsius target in the 2050s or 2060s. The last two conferences of parties did not result in the stronger pledges needed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. They have been all talk and no action. The problem is a lack of government leadership, which includes the US, which pumped more oil last year than ever before. One problem is that the public is understandably demanding cheap energy and cheap food, and these are being provided through unsustainable technologies, policies and practices. Hence, the US government, like many other governments, are not willing to take the actions needed to transition to a low-carbon economy in both the production and use of energy. Fossil fuels must be phased out as soon as possible, especially coal, and our agricultural systems must be transformed. The focus of most governments on achieving net zero by 2050 is all wrong. While we need net zero emissions by 2050, the focus on net zero is taken away from what the focus should be, and that is, what can we do now? We need goals underpinned by concrete, near-term, monitorable actions. We must focus on drastically reducing emissions between now and 2030, not only from the production and use of energy, but from our agricultural systems, as I've already said, especially the livestock system. We need to invest in novel alternative proteins to transform the meat industry. In the longer term, we need to transform our economic and finance systems together with our energy, food, materials and environmental systems. We must repurpose subsidies, internalize externalities and embrace a circular economy. This is achievable, but it will require all stakeholders to work together nationally and globally. To address climate change, trust and goodwill will be needed, but both are in short supply nationally and globally. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Greatly appreciated. We're going to take one more witness remotely now and then we'll take a short break. Next will be Rob Walker. Rob is the founding board chair at the Environmental Protection Network and Vice President of the Chino Cienega Foundation of Silver Spring, Maryland. Rob is a leader in the field of environmental resource policy and analysis and management. He has led large staffs, including when he was at EPA from 2007 to 2012 on economic and related policy research. Rob's areas of focus include environmental economics, agriculture and related lands, policy conservation, equity and justice initiatives and climate policy. So, Rob, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello to Santa Barbara. It's a privilege to be with you. This topic reflects back to a history I have with you where in the late 1970s, I represented the Governor's Office on Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Development and focused in your part of the world, and I think we were able to work together to manage some of the most challenging issues and may that community and may that region be preserved forever and ever. To begin with, I want to reiterate what others have so well said, that Base Camp Earth has a problem. And it is really that the window is closing on our ability to achieve and sustain stability of the global system. And that system word is so critical because it's so integrated with other elements that themselves are in flux. But what we have in juxtaposition for that in the US is the complete absence of an outcome-based national climate strategy. What we have is a set of enlightened, aggressive, individual activities that consist of regulation, rules, economic incentives, public investments in research and a wide variety of others that constitute an amalgam of powerful tools that are producing mitigation and mitigation value, but they are grossly inadequate and will remain grossly inadequate unless we do something to diversify and expand the base of the tools that we employ and the commitment to an outcome. And where I want to go with this is basically the topic of emissions pricing, of carbon pricing, of greenhouse gas emissions pricing, that we have developed an allergy to this topic over several decades, but it may well constitute the sine qua non by which we can get on the track that Bob Watson and Jim and others have discussed here. What we have is an opportunity to match up with much of what the rest of the world has undertaken or committed itself to. Forty nations and 33 sub-national units have undertaken emissions pricing systems covering about 23% of global emissions. Now, this is only a fraction of what we ultimately need, but it has generated momentum, and we need to attach ourselves to that momentum. At home, we have 13 states, many in the Northeast, but notably right there in California, which have adopted cap and trade or explicit emissions pricing systems that themselves are generating significant mitigation value, absolute reductions. But it stands in contrast with the US being the only industrialized nation without a national carbon price. Think of that. It's the stuff of shame. And what we have related to that is tremendous opportunities in a pricing structure, five in particular. When we adopt a pricing structure, we send a direct price signal to sources of emissions to moderate those emissions, to optimize within their systems in ways that are very different from the suasion and kind of voluntary-based systems that we have largely employed to date. We also generate substantial revenues from pricing systems that can be used for a variety of highly beneficial outcomes or expenditures, basically. We can basically compensate those who are the most disproportionately affected by those pricing systems. We can also offset some of the most regressive and distortionary taxes with them. We can basically fund technology to reduce the greenhouse gas intensity of some of the most core systems out there in terms of production. That is, the product streams that are most problematic in terms of generating both the domestic and global emissions. And we can also send a signal to the rest of the world that the adoption of a carbon price is integral to the participation in the global trading system, that it must be a societal, a national economic and international economic norm that is embraced, and we need to play a central role in advancing that. Now, what's transpiring here on the legislative front is a great deal of energy around competitiveness and in particular identifying which of our trading partners are most problematic with respect to high greenhouse gas intensity production of those core kinds of products from iron and steel to aluminum to basically nutrients applied to agricultural crop, meaning fertilizers and other products.
Robert, yeah, thank you so much, and I'm afraid we're a little
Out of time.
Time, yeah, so if you'd like to take 30 seconds to wrap it up, that'd be great.
I'll leave it that in order to match the rate at which that window is closing that I mentioned at the beginning, we need to harness the pricing system in combination with the other strategies and programs we've employed to match that moment with that closing window. Thank you so much. Sorry to go over.
Not at all. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the time constraints. I would also like to encourage you, if you're willing, to also submit your comments as long as you would like in a written form for the record. Thank you so much, Rob. Okay, and now we're going to take a short break. People in the room can get some refreshments. People on Zoom, sorry, and then we'll reconvene in about six minutes. Thank you. Our next speaker is remote and taped from Washington DC. She is Dr. Lisa Van Susteren, a practicing general and forensic psychiatrist in Washington DC, as I said, and then expert on the physical and mental health effects of climate disruption. She has served on the Advisory Board of the Center for Health and the Global Environment at the Harvard TH Schan School of Public Health and is co-founder of the Climate Psychiatry Alliance. In 2009, we co-convened the first gathering of experts on climate disruption and national security, communication and messaging, animal and plant extinction, community organizing and disaster psychiatry to discuss the unfolding crisis and its future impacts on the mental health of the public. In 2011, Dr. Van Susteren co-authored the paper entitled The Psychological Effects of Climate Warming on the United States: Why the United States Mental Health System Is Not Prepared. Lisa's book Emotional Inflammation, authored with science writer Stacy Bellino, was released in April 2020. Lisa lives in Bethesda, Maryland.
It's all hands on deck now. As the kids say, you will die of old age. We will die of climate change. Young people are fearful, angry and in despair about the future. They know that governments are not taking the dangers from the climate crisis seriously enough. They know they are not safe. I have spent hours with them face to face. I've heard accounts of storms that pulverize their homes, fires that incinerated them. I've heard of their lands cracked by drought, drowned by rains. Our children are not okay. They have told me that they would not bring babies into the world because of the increase in carbon emissions and because they felt it would be immoral, given the conditions they expect. They have told me they see no point in continuing their education because it would be pointless in a world they don't expect will exist. They have told me about friends discussing rational suicide. I have watched while they anxiously swept away tears that fell during tense silences. I have heard and felt the anger rising up, filling the room with outrage towards governments that aren't caring enough to do what it takes to save them. They know. They don't live in a cave. They can see the pipelines being laid, the coal trains and gas being transported. They hear the anguish of activists and the cries of foul from those policymakers who speak the truth. And they know the names of the political knaves bankrupting the future to be bankrolled by the fossil fuel industry today. They want them out. They know it doesn't have to be this way. In a study of which I am a co-author, 10,000 youth from around the world, young people aged 16 to 25 from the US, UK, Brazil, Finland, Philippines, France, Portugal, Nigeria, India and Australia, reported their climate distress. They have no illusions. They know what is happening. Three-quarters reported they are very worried about climate change. More than half say it affects their daily lives. Nearly half feel we are doomed. A full two-thirds lay the blame squarely at the feet of government. This spring, a study of which I'm also a co-author, measuring the climate distress of 16,000 US youth aged 15 to 25 by state, will be released. Sitting out any effort is not an option. What will become of a country, of society, when faith in our institutions is lost? The infuriates young people and adults, well-meaning though they may be, suggests it is young people who will fix the problem. The kids know. We have their statements, declarations, pleas and protests. They are flooding the streets to tell us they feel betrayed and want action. We know about what trauma does to kids from studies of ACEs, adverse childhood experiences. They exact a terrible and lifelong toll that includes not only the after-effects of the physical harms, the losses, injuries, displacements, et cetera, but also direct psychological damage, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, substance abuse and cognitive impacts, and that they face as a result increased morbidity, that is lifelong vulnerability to illness and an early death. These impacts are not only enduring, they prime to make us more prone to future stress. Is it up to us? Many young people suffer from pre-traumatic stress, experiencing the same symptoms as classic PTSD, but triggered by images of future trauma they can't get out of their minds. We already have mounting deaths of despair. And while the factors are complex, believing you may not have a future and knowing how contagious behaviors can be, how could we not worry the numbers will rise? The kids know that they are inheriting, what they are inheriting is injustice of the greatest magnitude. Is there a point where intergenerational injustice becomes intergenerational aggression? The World Health Organization and Child Abuse groups describe child abuse as physical, sexual and emotional abuse, but also neglect and the failure to provide an environment in which a child can thrive. I know child abuse when I see it. I see it. It's a race against time now. Will climate tipping points get there first? Or will we change fast enough and by a hair, social tipping points will get there first? Threats to our democratic form of government swirl menacingly as we think over the impacts of climate. Hold close that in times of peril and scarcity, we regress. Fear takes over. Some express that fear as anger, especially those who feel humiliated, driving the demonizing crude behaviors and political polarization that so divide and hurt us. Under these conditions, we may be willing to trade long-cherished values in exchange for promises of security made by the very bullies and tyrants responsible for the perilous conditions to begin with, those who have stood in the way of policies to address the destabilizing and escalating threat of the climate crisis. In their lust for power, under the guise of restoring order, some will be complicit in voting in their toxic form of a some will be complicit in voting in their toxic form of authoritarian government. Sitting us out is not an option. Because whatever we can do must be done.
For the record, thank you, Lisa. Sitting this out is not an option. Whatever can be done must be done. And the kids know. Appreciate the preparation and that contribution. Next, we have Don Viviani.
I'm Don Viviani. I'm board president of CPRI, which is co-hosting this hearing with Community Environmental Council. Well, I want to thank you for inviting us, working with us, providing this great venue. In the late 90s, I was director of the Climate Policy Assessment Division of EPA. Back then, climate seemed a lot more manageable. Today, governments find themselves on the horns of a dilemma. They have two constituencies that are facing existential threats, but only one of them is saved. Next slide. There's a paradox about a metaphorical donkey philosophy called Berd- Berd- Berd and Zass. I just like standing there with my horse down. This donkey can't decide between two stacks of hay, and he starts to die. Governments find themselves in the position of that donkey right now. But instead of hay, governments must choose between ensuring a stable and safe environment for our kids or a stable financial environment for coal, oil, and gas interests. By not acting decisively, government has picked the stack by default, and it's the wrong one. Next slide please. Anyone, anyone who follows climate spring with this sort of slide, right? It has past, present, and several possible emission futures, usually the top emission line here. It's called business as usual, then some imaginary lines that people make up over here that include possible controls. At the very bottom, there's usually a line of what the emissions would have to be for us to maintain 1.5 or two degrees of warming. This graph is different than the ones you usually see now because the red line doesn't represent business as usual, or people are guessing it's going to be that. The red line is the coal, oil, and gas that producers have committed to extract and that governments are committed to use and burn. So unless we stop the extraction of this, these emissions will become real. No matter what year, and I've been looking at these graphs for maybe 20 to 30 years, these graphs always look the same. They're sort of a slow rise in temperature. And then this is probably where the current date, and then it shows maybe a leveling off, and then it usually goes down naturally. That never happens. It never happens. The reason it doesn't happen is because we never, we never stop emissions. And we never go after the thing that's producing the emissions, the fossil fuels. If you look at, if you look at 2030, and I think Bob Wuss alluded to this, in 2030, we're going to be producing twice the emissions that are consistent with a 1.5 degree temperature rise. And that's probably why Bob said we never mentioned. Next slide, please. The gap is larger than depicted in that last slide for a couple of reasons. Because of climate tipping points, points of no return, where a small change in temperature can alter global climate patterns like the line of the permafrost, that releases methane, which is going to, which is going to drive that red line even higher. And then, and then the blue line is actually going to be depressed a little because of the loss of albedo, the loss of reflectivity. So the, so the, so the, the energy imbalance that Jim talked about is going to get even worse. So governments are donkeys in regard to tipping. They're more like lost donkeys. Governments need to take direct steps to limit extraction and use and have to take into account the greatest risks, tipping elements sliding into irreversible, no-return states. 60% of the committed fossil resources must stay in the ground to avoid triggering several more tipping elements. Next slide. The US and EPA have no pathway to limit extractions and the use of oil, gas, or coal, no way to achieve the 2030 goals without using the toxic substances control act that Dan described. CASCA is a chemical safety authority. There are no chemicals more unsafe for humanity than fossil fuels and their question products.
And that's time, so wrap it up.
Yeah, I'll be real quick. I'm sorry. Climate tipping elements are metastable. They pick their stack of hay based on temperature and X and other forces. But when all of those other forces are driven by our emissions, man has free will. We get to decide how much we emit. If we haven't had donkeys making decisions, let's make sure they pick the haystack and fix our kids. And let's make sure that governor, government, our government doesn't act like a lost.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Okay, our next speaker is Haley Ayers. Haley, I would like to introduce herself. I'm going to let her go now. Thank you. Thank you, Haley.
Hi, I'm going to assume you guys can all see and hear me. I cannot see myself, but that's okay. Um, yes, I will quickly jump in. So hi, my name is Haley Ayers. I am from Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, or Sea Frog, a grassroots nonprofit fighting forty fates out of fossil fuels in Ventura County and beyond. And with my limited time tonight, I'll talk about three federal actions that are specific actions that are needed right now to protect central coast communities. So first, we need a rulemaking to update the aquifer exemption regulations to prevent contamination of groundwater sources of drinking water. There are major gaps in the current process to exempt aquifers from full Safe Drinking Water Act protection and allow the injection of industrial fluids, including that from oil and gas. Though these exemptions have irrevocable consequences on our most precious resource, water. Across the country, over 4,000 aquifer exemptions have been approved, including multiple here on the central coast. We need a rulemaking to consider a more robust and complete environmental review that protects the groundwater used for drinking and other essentials in our communities. Aquifer exemptions are one example of a short-sighted regulatory loophole that allows the fossil fuel industry to extend their polluting lifetime. Others include carbon capture and storage and hydrogen. We need federal leadership to protect our communities from these false solutions. The first carbon capture and storage project in California is currently being considered in Kern County, and we've seen disappointing legislative support of hydrogen. These are not climate solutions and pose serious safety and public health risks and should not be allowed in the United States and definitely not promoted by our federal government. Lastly, oil operators must pay for their polluting facilities in full and swiftly. The $660 million that the bipartisan infrastructure law provided to states to plug orphan wells while needed was a taxpayer-funded bailout for the oil and gas industry. A federal industry surety fund should be established to fill the billions of dollar gap to clean up orphan wells across California and the country. We urge the federal government and EPA to take these three actions now to protect our communities here locally and others across the nation. I apologize for my brevity. I prepared only two minutes per the provided instructions, and I'm happy to answer any questions or connect with anyone interested in getting involved in the local fight for a fossil fuel phase out. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Excellent. I would appreciate your submitting for the record your fuller remarks. And I'm particularly interested in taking a look at the effort to remove the aquifer injection exemptions as you were describing. Thank you very much. The next is John Burks, standing in for Peter Tans. And John is a emeritus professor of atmospheric chemistry at the University of Colorado Boulder. He's now Californian, but he was also the founder of To Be Tech Technology in Boulder and served as their chief scientist for many years. And he is here to actually present the views of a colleague, Peter Tans, and I'll let him explain.
Peter Tans is a retired senior scientist at NOAA's Climate Monitoring Laboratory. Over the past few decades, he's the person who's been responsible for measuring greenhouse emissions all over the world. And so when you see all these graphs of CO2 going up and down and so forth, this is the group that he, that he ran for decades. He's also, in my opinion, probably that opinion, the world's expert on global carbon cycle.
John, you got to be louder, so I guess you got to get that mic a little closer to you. I'm sorry. People, people were. Excellent.
There you go. Okay. Start over again. Bob Peter Tans is a senior scientist, retired senior scientist, recently retired on that. NOAA Climate Monitoring Laboratory, where for decades, you have been there, you're screening us gases around the world. So I've known him for many years. He was unable to be here today because, yes, to basically get the nurse for his hearing. So this is Peter Tans. A few things about climate emergency that we find ourselves in are extremely well-understood. There are, one, human activities are the sole cause. Two, carbon dioxide is by far the most important greenhouse gas. Because, because it has the largest current impact, and it also does not disappear from the ocean atmosphere biosphere system for thousands of years. And three, we have evolved from renewable energy to renewable energy. We have another planet that where solar and wind are ready to scale up, and we already, we are already cheaper than conventional fuels except for transportation. Battery development is advancing rapidly. The last thing, most governments assured us that they take global eating seriously. Yet global emissions have remained costly over the last 10 years at a record-high pace. So they'll see how to continue to increase at a record pace as well. At the COP26 meeting in Glasgow, no longer since CO2 containment was made. Perhaps it will us, it was suddenly proclaimed that methane is the highest priority and that they had made great progress. The largest delegation at Glasgow was launched from the oil and gas industry. Since then, the latter has presented itself as part of the solution, which is ramp up oil and gas production. This is Orwellian doublespeak. It isn't the importance of spending resources on methane. However, if those resources are switched away from CO2 to methane, it is actually a negative. Furthermore, it would be more effective if we are serious in tackling the climate crisis to give priority to nitrous oxide emissions over methane emissions. Why? Nitrous oxide has an atmospheric lifetime of 120 years. Methane has nine years. While we are causing a climate problem that will be with future generations for longer than the entire duration of the Chinese civilization. The cumulative heat retention over its entire lifetime of 1 million tons of nitrous oxide is 30 times, 33 times greater than with negative 10 of methane. Can we scrub CO2 from the atmosphere and bury it securely in rock formations? Despite sales pitches from the subsidies for companies trying to do this, they have all gone bankrupt, accepting cases where CO2 is pumped underground to get additional oil and gas out. Carbon storage in ecosystems is quite vulnerable as recent increases in wildfire has demonstrated. The oceans have stored about 25% of the CO2 emissions so far. But we, if by some miracle succeed in lowering atmospheric carbon dioxide, the stored CO2 will leave the oceans until people that move the atmosphere is restored. Our global climate predicament is truly an emergency. Solutions require international cooperation. For example, if we want poor countries to make the switch to renewable energy, the rich countries will have to pay them. It would be social justice after centuries of colonialism. In addition, they have been held back more recently by financial strangulation carried out by the big banks, hedge funds, et cetera, and the International Monetary Fund. Instead of international cooperation, the focus of policymakers is on competition and war. The obscene amounts of, amount of resources going to military demonstrates it. A striking example of the lunacy is the modernization of nuclear weapons. What for? To make them unusable? We can all come up with a long list of infinitely more constructive ways to spend that money where the US has amounts to $4,000 per person per year. Another fundamental issue is that while policymakers almost always listen to advice from the economists, that is unfortunate because the great majority has not grasped that the earth is finite, of which global heating is one manifestation. Economists' primary and real challenge these days is to develop a better economic system that can provide food, shelter, healthcare, education, et cetera, or all. But that is not going to end. Hopefully, it would restore some of the damage. Signed, Peter Tans.
Thank you very much, John, for delivering. And Peter, thank you very much for that that piercing and provocative statement. Appreciate the contribution. All right, now, appreciate as well that Stan is back. Is that Stan? Okay, Stan, he needs to put on his, his speaker and his video. Is that correct? Okay, all right, Stan's coming in. Okay, great. I'm going to introduce Stan now. Stan, welcome. Stan's a former trial attorney and two-time, two-term Santa Barbara County District Attorney. Currently, he's a private mediator, arbitrator, educator. He also teaches documentary filmmaking and visual journalism. He serves as outreach specialist for Citizens Climate Lobby, I believe, in Santa Barbara. And he's an ambassador to the MIT Sloan Climate Interactive Enroads Simulator. Welcome, Stan.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Stan. Thank you.
How do I get my slides on here? Share screen. Is that showing? No.
Yeah, yeah. Now we got a white screen. Was that you?
Uh, yeah, COP28, it's up.
Stan, Stan, you've done it.
All right, all right. Anyway, thank you for the kind introduction. I had no idea. When I saw James Hansen on the list, I thought it was somebody from Carpinteria. So this is indeed an honor and thank you for listening to me for a few minutes. I am a part of the large number, hundreds now, of ambassadors around the world for MIT Sloan's Enroad Simulator. And this is what we see, not we, but this is what the simulator sees by putting in not promises, the little red dot that you can see on the right-hand side under greenhouse gas net emissions are promises made at Paris. But the, you can see from this that all the way out to 2,100, coal doesn't change much, oil doesn't change much, natural gas, the blue goes up a little bit. Renewables increase substantially, but still we end up at a place where obviously we don't want to be. As Catherine Hale always says, the planet will survive, but the species and the rest of us probably won't. So that brings me to COP28. I saw Drew Jones, the CEO of Climate Interactive, give a presentation the other day trying to put what was agreed on at Dubai into the simulator. And basically, it is the first time, you know, starting all the way back in Rio and working our way all the way up to the UAE, COP28, there's been a heavy emphasis on the what, what's the problem? But very little in the Conference of Parties on what are we going to do about it? How do we take care of this problem? And so for the first time, there has been a statement of trying to find a way to meet the purposes and long-term goals of the Paris Agreement. And recognizing this is the one that didn't get published very often in most of the reports that I've seen on COP28 about the deep, rapid, and sustained reductions in greenhouse gas emissions in line with 1.5 degrees centigrade increase that over pre-industrial times that everybody's been talking about tonight. It's really the first time that the countries have agreed to actually the how. And if you look at paragraph 28, you'll see 13 prescribed actions that would help us reduce the greenhouse emissions, the greenhouse effects, and so on. the greenhouse effects, and so on and so forth, to get us down. And the first one is to highly subsidize renewables. No surprise there. But the second is to highly increase both energy efficiency and transportation and buildings and industry. Coupling that with the better, much better deforestation practices, stop cutting down the forest, switching from animal-based to plant-based diets and so on, and then dealing significantly with the methane and other F-gases and so forth that create substantial problems. This does make a difference from 3.3 degrees centigrade down to 2.3, but still does not get us where we need to be. So this brings us to where Mr. Watson was here a few minutes ago. With carbon pricing, we can keep the earth, given these assumptions of reducing the subsidies estimated by the World Bank to be $1.3 trillion currently for fossil fuel industries, keeping those subsidies down through the process of some form of taxation and imposing a carbon tax here, assumed to be about $100 for each equivalent CO2 measure, which I'll get to in a second, under the bill HR5744 from Salud Carbahal, the Carbon Fee, Energy Innovation and Carbon Fee Dividend Act, recently introduced, that gets us down to 1.7 degrees along with the other bars that I pulled in the earlier screen. So we went from 2.3 down to 1.7 degrees centigrade by the end of the century, getting closer to the 1.5, which someone said tonight would be virtually impossible to get to in any event. But without carbon pricing, which is my main point, you don't get there. You still say above, well above 2 degrees centigrade if you don't use the carbon pricing mechanism. So I just wanted to bring everybody's attention tonight to focus on, from a US policy perspective, on the bill introduced by Salud Carbahal, HR5744. On his website, there's a full-throated, very interesting and lengthy article on why he supports it and why it's politically feasible. And then Citizens Climate Lobby, which has been working on this policy initiative for a more sustainable world for the last 15 years, has a website at Citizens Climate Lobby which has all of the best of the papers and science and reasons why carbon pricing is not the only solution. This makes it pretty clear. As Drew Jones says in closing, "It takes a lot of seeds to make a garden." So in order to keep the fossil fuels in the ground, increase the pressure through carbon pricing and signal the markets, make buildings and transport more efficient, take care of the earth rather than destroy it, plant more trees, and take care of methane gases, those seeds will have the potential and should provide a ray of hope of a path towards a more sustainable, livable future. So I appreciate this opportunity. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your contribution. Okay, Ethan? Come on up. So this is Ethan Medei. Ethan, are you in middle school?
Yes, I am.
Are you in seventh grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade?
Yeah.
All right, excellent.
All right, this is working.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Take it away.
Imagine it is beautiful sunny day and you want to tend to your vegetable garden. So you put on your hazmat suit, grab your poison spray, and head out to the garden. Crazy, right? Who would do that? This is the unfortunate reality of the way most of our food is grown. Hi, everyone. I'm Ethan Medei. I'm 13 and I've been learning about the environment for my entire life. I'm so glad to have the opportunity to speak here. Although I support the efforts to remove fossil fuels, the time has long passed for this to be our primary focus. More, equally, if not more important for the future health of the environment is facing the disastrous impacts of industrial factory farming. Research by many nonprofits, scientists, and other experts have proven that industrial agricultural methods such as the use of pesticides, pillage, and monoculture crops have a negative impact on not only our health but the health of our planet. We've reached the tipping point. As many of you know, carbon dioxide, or CO2, is the base of all life on Earth. It isn't something we need to get rid of. We just need to get the amount of CO2 in our atmosphere right. One way to reach balance is through carbon sequestration. Carbon sequestration is a process by which carbon is drawn from the atmosphere and stored in the soil through photosynthesis, unlike our methods in industrial agriculture. Our current agricultural system is broken. We till, then we spray, then we till some more. This causes carbon to go right back up in the atmosphere along with other toxic chemicals now leaking into our food and water systems. We need to change our agricultural system. The issue isn't the farmers who work hard every day to make a living. It's the corporations and the systems controlling and the system and the corporations controlling the system that needs to change. I encourage the US government to support, educate, and incentivize a rapid transition from industrial farming to small-scale regenerative agriculture through the upcoming Farm Bill. This would include farm support programs, classes on regenerative agriculture, and most importantly, subsidies incentivize the transition. I recognize that the US government is already doing some of these things, but it needs to be prioritized. It can no longer take the backseat. I imagine most people here have heard of regenerative agriculture and know the basics, and many of you know much more than me. But for those who are new to the concept, regenerative agriculture is farming in the way nature intended, incorporating indigenous knowledge to support the life of every living being, from microbes to mammals. As a regenerative farm, concepts such as no-till farming, biodiversity, crop rotation, managed grazing, and cover cropping are integrated into daily practice. By definition, regenerative agriculture is glyphosate-free, organic, and non-PMO. All these practices enhance the quality of the land, the land's ability to recover from natural disasters, and make the land more fertile. Southern California's climate, like most of the world, is becoming more extreme by the year, making the 23 million inhabitants of the area more and more vulnerable. Cover crops increase weather resistance, help soak up rainfall, regenerate aquifers, and protect the soil from the sun and wind. Unlike extractive farming methods, cover cropping attracts pollinators, improves soil biodiversity, and sequesters carbon through photosynthesis. Pillage and large factory farms release carbon from the soil as it tears up the life underneath it, while regenerative agriculture sequesters carbon by capturing it in natural plant growth. What I'm saying here, this regenerative agriculture is the solution to the climate crisis. It's a hard transition to make and one that I'm sure the US government will prioritize in coming years. Let's let the earth do its job, the regenerative one. Thank you for your time.
Wow. Wow, Ethan, thank you for that very articulate, well-constructed, well-supported statement. Really appreciate it. Now, is Penny Odom here? Penny, okay, great. Penny, I don't have much on you, so could you introduce yourself? And then you have two minutes. Two minutes, thank you.
No problem. I am a retired nurse here in town. I do work with the Southern Utah Wilderness Alliance and the Utah Coalition. And I'm here in support of, it's more of the key part of CPR. They have, there's a 30-odd-year legislative act known as the America's Red Rock Wilderness Act. It seeks to protect 8 million acres of land in southeast Utah. This is vital for us here, us here. That's why I'm here, what you asked about that. It's one of the largest contiguous places that has wilderness characteristics, which is BLM designation. Desert lands have been recently found to have extremely occult but extremely potent carbon sequestration characteristics due to the root structures of the flora and the nature of the sliprock itself, which is porous. And as scientists like that, I'm leaving it to the guys you all talk to. But if we prevent the development of the currently non-lethal kinds of fuels that Utah, we all know about the Utah delegation, would like to get their hands on, keeping those in the ground, we can account for 5.7% of the carbon budget needed to limit work in this country if we don't disturb the lands. In their undeveloped state, they currently store 247 metric tons out of the atmosphere here. As such, it has value in reaching the 30 by 30 goals, not to mention the wildlife corridors from South America up to Canada, go right through there. It's cultural, religious, and it is also a large portion of the Colorado River drainage. So it's a short thank you. BLM EPA have tools to use to help further protect this land from basically the Utah delegation, such as we're gonna study areas and that sort of thing. And I'm here to promote those legislative solutions. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, very good. Well, everybody, thank you so much. I probably, I'll try to say a couple of words, although it'd be impossible to really do justice to sum up today. But today, we did hear from some of the most noted relevant scientists in the area of climate change, environmental protection, global sustainability. And in this, in what is a continuing discussion, these set of public hearings that we've been holding for the public's benefit and for the benefit of the consideration by the United States government, including especially the United States Environmental Protection Agency. As you know, CPR initiative, my protection and restoration initiative is especially focused on pressing our federal government to utilize all of its highly powerful authorities, including those that have gone underutilized or in fact, not utilized in any way to address this particular global crisis, including the very potent Toxic Substances Control Act. Those of you who have yet to visit our website will see the petition effort that we undertook in late 2022. We're building towards another one or set of petitions also sounding on the Toxic Substances Control Act. We can't do this without your help, frankly, in many different ways. And so we would urge you upon the publication of our next petition to consider endorsing and sponsoring that effort. It's one way that we can show that it's not just a handful of people, but hundreds of people or thousands of people who are supporting our demand that EPA not let this powerful tool go unused. Our next public hearing likely would be in the Bay Area. Two of the principal authors of the 2022 major study on tipping points in the global system, particularly those tipping points that are fast approaching as we are approaching in terms of ambient temperature worldwide, the 1.5 degrees Celsius guardrail, they have committed to our next public hearing. They were not able to be here today. So tune into that if you are especially interested in that aspect of the problem. Lastly, we greatly appreciate the partnership with the Community Environmental Council. They worked really hard with us to get this together. Unfortunately, there were some technical difficulties, but I think that to the extent that we are able, we may re-tape some of the remote presentations to ensure that when it's posted on our archives page, that you and others who may be interested in reviewing that will have that opportunity. And in addition, we intend to post summaries not only of this hearing but of our first two hearings and also our next hearing for the benefit of every one of you who have attended and those who may visit. And again, for the benefit of our colleagues at the Environmental Protection Agency. So once again, thank you very much for coming. We look forward to working with you as we go forward on all of this.